It's ten o'clock, it's time for the council meeting session. We have Mr. Sivac, Mr. Savornic, President, and seven more from the quorum. So come on, please, come to the council chamber. We have Mr. Brinson, and then Mr. Tawki, the President. We have President, but we do have a very special guest today in the council chamber. And if everybody will come to attention, I would call upon Mr. Savornic to introduce his guest.
Ah, Hal? Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. Today is a wonderful day in the history of the Republic of Croatia. For on this day, May 30th, 1990, the Croatian Parliament declared its independence. And on this day, May 30th, it is celebrated as statehood day for the Republic of Croatia. Ten years ago, it was this body, the governing body of the city of Los Angeles, the city council of the city of Los Angeles, which was one of the, if not the first city in the United States of America to recognize Croatia's independence. And as you are very well aware, the city of Los Angeles and the city of Split, Croatia, are sister cities, the sister city agreement being consummated here in council chambers in 1994. It is indeed a pleasure, Mr. President, members, this morning to welcome some very distinguished visitors. First, we have the deputy mayor of the city of Split, Vesna Podlepeć, who is here with us this morning. Mrs. Magda Marasovic, who is with us here this morning. The council general of the Republic of Croatia in Los Angeles, Dr. Michu Munivrana. The special assistant to the council general, Mr. Felix Duhovic. And the president of the Croatian-American club in San Pedro, Mr. Vladu Lonza. In addition, Mr. President, members, over the course of the last weekend, we have had an opportunity on numerous occasions to enjoy the performance of one of the premier folk ensembles in Croatia, that is the folk ensemble Philip Devic. On Friday evening, at the Richard Henry Dana Junior High School Auditorium in San Pedro, approximately a thousand people enjoyed a concert of this wonderful group, followed by performances throughout the weekend. Due to your generosity, colleagues, also yesterday, excuse me, on Sunday, the Croatian-American club hosted the annual statehood day festivities in San Pedro. This morning, I would like to ask that the deputy mayor, please come forward, and Mr. Duhovic, if you would like to translate, that would be wonderful, followed by a very special treat this morning in honor of the people of the city of Los Angeles, will be a very brief performance by the folk ensemble Philip Devic. But before I recognize the deputy mayor, there's a gentleman who has entered the chambers that I would like to thank, that is council deputy Mario Jurovic from Ruth Galanter's office, who, ten years ago, was the gentleman who authored and saw to it that the city of Los Angeles, he then working for our friend and colleague Joan Milky Flores, recognized Croatia's independence. So Mario, thank you for that, ten years ago today. Mr. President, members of the council, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce the deputy mayor of our sister city of Split.
Poštevani gospodine prezijedniče, poštevani gospodo vječnici iz pregrada Splita, želi vas zaista sva rado pozdraviti i zahvaliti vas na velikom gostoprinstvu, kojeste ovde pružili kako delegaciji grada Splita tako i kulturalnom ensamblu Philip Devic.
Honorable, Mr. President, and honorable members of the council, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for visiting this city and I would like to thank you for all the help that you have contributed here.
Kao što je naglasio to, gospodin Savornic, mi danas je veliki dan za Hrvatsku državu. Mi danas slavimo deset godina svoje neovisnosti i samostalnosti i koristim priliku da zahvalim celom američkom narodu kao i gradu Los Angelesu, koji je dao podršku, kako podršku u neovisnosti Hrvatske države, tako i podršku koju smo imali za cijelo vrijeme rata vođenu u Hrvatsko. Ne treba zaboraviti da upravo Los Angeles zaključio pobratimstvo sa gradom Splitom u toku najvećih, najveća Grecije na Hrvatsku državu.
Also, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the American people for supporting Croatia effort on this, for the independence and for the recognition of Croatia. And also, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the city council for being one of the first ones to recognize Republic of Croatia as an independent state.
Drago mi je također da mi naše prijateljstvo potvrđujemo upravo kad Hrvatska radi nove zalete ka svjetskim i evropskim integracijama.
Also, we are very happy for the cooperation that we found from United States and other countries in the West in this effort of Croatia to participate with the West, with NATO, with United Europe, and so on.
Na kraju koristim ovu priliku da vas pozove, da nam uzvratite gostoprinstvo, da dođete i obiđete naš grad, grad koji je star 1700 godina, koji obiruje izuzetnim bogatstvima kulturalnim i kulturalne baštine. Pozivam vas da dođete u grad koji je iznijedrio jednog gorana Ivanijevića, velikog tanisera, svjetskih razmijera, dina rađu, tonjak u koća, duška tabaka. Dakle, još jedan put hvalan ljepa na sve mu i dođite u naš lijepi grad.
Once more, I would like to thank you. And I would like to extend the invitation for a delegation from the city of Los Angeles to visit our beautiful old city that's 1700 years old, that produced many great names like Ivanijević, Kukoć, Rađa, these, and many others. And please, come to visit us here. Thank you.
I would also thank you, Mr. President, members. Over the weekend, we presented certificates of welcome to our delegation on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. But at this time, and with no further ado, as a thank you to the people of the city of Los Angeles and to this governing body, we do have folk ensemble Philip Devic, which will now begin to get into their places to perform. As the deputy mayor makes a presentation to the city, they will begin to take their places in order to thank you for your recognition of Croatia's independence and to thank you for being the sister city of the city of Split.
Mr. President, we have another gift for you for the city of Los Angeles. If you could come here, take it. How you doing? This is Mr. Podlepeć. It's a nice little gift, and you could read this while in your spare time, and you'll enjoy it reading. It's about the city of Split. It's a monograph in there. Thank you.
Let me just say, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I accept these. And thank you very much. We're certainly welcoming you to our city.
Mr. President, members, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce one of the premier, if not the premier, folk ensembles in the Republic of Croatia from the city of Split, folk ensemble Philip Devic. Mr. President, members, the folk ensemble Philip Devic from Split, Croatia, our sister city. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, for allowing us this time this morning to welcome the deputy mayor and the folk ensemble on this, the 10th anniversary of the statehood of the Republic of Croatia. Thank you for your time, and again, on behalf of the deputy mayor and all of those, we really do appreciate all of the city council's assistance in helping us in the ensuing war after the independence on Los Angeles, helping with relief supplies, with equipment, and also being one of the first cities to recognize Croatia. Thank you, Mr. President, members.
Rudy, you forgot to introduce Maria to...
Yes, I need to introduce her.
Also, to our group visiting, I think it would be appropriate for everyone to know that our clerk, Maria Kostrensich, is here with us today, a proud Croatian-American, so very good.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Savornic. Maria Caldero.
Brinson, Chick, Fear, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Patek, Obedia, Riley, Thomas, Swarnic, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, thirteen members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, the council will please come to order. This is a meeting of the city council for the city of Los Angeles on the 30th day of May the year 2000. There are fifteen council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel 35, and we're also being monitored by council phone. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Holden moves, Mr. Fear second. If there's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items to continue. Item number six, there's a request from Building and Safety to continue to June 6th.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number 18, there's a request to continue to June 2nd.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item, next item, Mr. President, you have a confirmation of city official. Item number 19 is confirmation of Julie Butcher to the Quality and Productivity Commission.
Okay.
You call it special?
Let's take it up now. We have a motion that been made by Ms. Chick. Any discussion on this? If not...
Walters?
Yeah. Mrs. Walters, you want to speak?
Uh, is Ms. Butcher here?
Yes.
Ms. Butcher, would you come to the center table?
Ms. Butcher, you're up for confirmation to a productivity commission. I will be voting no on your appointment today. And it has nothing to do with your labor affiliation. I have the deepest respect for the people whom you represent, for all of labor and what they stand for. But I cannot vote for you for activities you were involved in that was quite, that were quite separate and apart from labor activities. So my vote to you has nothing to do with labor or the people for whom you work. But it's a no vote against confirmation of you for this position.
Mr. Padea?
Thank you, Mr. President. Julie, I rise to say I'm going to vote for you. And I wanted to share with my colleagues one big reason why. In addition to the work you do on behalf of the union and all the members that you represent, you and I have had a chance to work together on that big issue we've been trying to tackle in terms of street resurfacing. And it's from you and Greg Scott that I've learned a lot of the things that the city has done in the last several years to improve the way in which we maintain our streets and try to repair our streets, not only increasing the number of dollars that we budget for that item, but really at the Joint Labor Management Committee, working together to develop new and innovative ways to be more efficient with our resources, to be more efficient with our personnel. And it's that type of thinking, that type of success that we've seen through that committee and through that department that I think warrants you a position on the Quality and Productivity Commission. We need to tap your brain, your spirit, your commitment to the city, and your obvious experience and success, not just for that one particular department and that one particular area, but to help us throughout the city. So I'm proud to support you.
Mrs. Chick?
Yes, colleagues, as Chair of the committee that especially works with the Quality and Productivity Commission, I'm very much looking forward to what Julie Butcher can bring to the table as a member of the commission, particularly because of her already very major role in helping us to create and adopt a model and a policy of joint labor management. What is the official title that we've come up with? Joint Labor Management Productivity Committees? And I think we have all seen the positive benefits that have come from labor and management working together. Many of the sections of city departments and city staff that we have been honoring, that Jackie Goldberg and I have been honoring, and Jackie brought this into council on Fridays after the award ceremony for the commission. Many of those programs are products of labor and management working together. So I think we've got some good, hard work before us to keep improving things, and I look forward to having you as a part of that team.
Mr. Fear?
Thanks, Mr. President. When I nominated Ms. Butcher to this commission, I actually didn't expect it to be a controversial discussion or a long one either. But now that we are into a debate on the issue, let me say the reason that I nominated Ms. Butcher is... The reasons are twofold, I think. One, in general, I... I mean, the worst thing that could happen to an elected official is to be opposed, and the much worse thing that happened to them is they don't get re-elected after they've been opposed. So the fact that it matters that when you put your trust and faith in the people that you work with over the years, and then they pull the rug out of you, underneath you, then of course, that's something difficult to ever forget or forgive. And so I'm going to join with Ms. Walters. She would not be alone in her no vote. I'm voting no also. I think that when you represent the class of people that she does, and I said loyalty begets loyalty, at some point, you're going to be at odds with the so-called establishment. I guess that's where we are. And you're either going to be loyal to the Commission that you're serving in, or you're going to be loyal to the people that you represent. And I would expect you to be loyal to the people that you represent. And so I'm not saying it'd be an inherent conflict, because I don't know that to be the case, but I do know how I'm going to vote, and I know why.
Mr. Pacheco.
I just want, Mr. President, colleagues, I just wanted to recognize that Ms. Butcher is a resident of the 14th Council District and one of my constituents, and I'm very pleased to see that the Commissions are getting people who live on the east side of the 110, which is a great accomplishment. Actually, the east side of the 405 is what I've heard is a great accomplishment. So I will be supporting Ms. Butcher. I believe her talent and skills as a labor leader and her history of the city provides us with some insight in this Commission, and I do know that her and her family are very involved in the community. So for me, it's a pleasure to vote for her today, and I encourage an I vote from everyone.
Mr. Brinson.
Yes, Mr. President, Members of the Council. I'm happy to support Julie for a number of reasons. Number one, I think she brings a very important ingredient to the table in being able to represent labor, and I think it's important that we recognize that's an important ingredient in any type of productivity that we have in our civilization. We have to have the ability to work with labor and with business and with leaders, and she has that quality. But more than that is the way that she goes about her business. Now, some of you may not agree, and I can understand, because her job is not an easy one, representing the segment of the community that she represents, and you're not always going to be happy with what message she has to bring, but in spite of that, you have to respect the way that she does her job. She's very proficient, and I respect her, and I think that she's going to be a very important ingredient, and I would urge an I vote on her part.
Goldberg.
We started down the path of talking about Joint Labor Management Committees. There was really only one person who stepped forward amongst all of the unions and said, "Well, we'll be the guinea pigs," and that was Julie Butcher. And she went out on a limb and got the members of her group, and particularly those who were in the Bureau of Sanitation, to come forward and sit down and talk about how to make solid waste collection in the City of Los Angeles more effective, more efficient, more cost-effective. And we each year reap the benefits of that, in that we now have amongst the best curbside recycling in the state of California, and probably in the nation. We also have green waste recycling, as well as garbage disposal. As a result of the Joint Labor Management Committee, which was willing to work not just across disciplines and across unions, but across departments, we have set a model for how you can do something better without the old adage that the only way to save money is to reduce the benefits and the wages of hard-working city employees. So I just think that there isn't probably a more ideal person to be on a Commission that is supposed to deal with productivity. And for those reasons, actually, for your leadership and for your commitment and dedication, and for your willing to go out on a limb and be in those hard places where really it's quite possible for everybody to be shooting at you from all sides, including your own members, and that's a tough thing to do. And for those reasons, I want to add my note of admiration to those others who've already spoken and to urge an I vote on this Commission. Appointment.
Let me point out that although Mr. Fear might have recommended Julie Butcher, it was the council president that made the appointment. Just to let you clean the record up. So prepare the roll, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 2 noes.
Julie, you've been confirmed. Congratulations, and thank you for serving the city, and we'll send that forthwith. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, the item number one is the mayor's veto, which was not received. You wish to just hold that on the desk? Next item, items noticed for public hearing, items two through seven, with the exception of six that has already been acted upon.
We have no cards. Is there anyone in the audience wants to be heard on two through seven, with the exception of six? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion by council members? Any specials? Two, three, four, five, and seven. Okay, we meet in, Ms. Skouski moves. Prepare the roll on those items, two, three, four, five, and seven. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items eight through 17. On item number 10, the operative date on that ordinance should be July 2nd.
On item 10?
Yes, Mr. President.
July 2nd, there's no objections, we'll correct that. Any specials by council members?
Mr. President, item number eight.
Eight is called special, and number 10 is called special. Any others? Any other specials? If not, prepare the roll on nine, 11 through 18, no, 17. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Fourth with on 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16. Okay, the next item.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 20 through 31.
Fourth with on 17?
Please.
Yeah, fourth with on 17. There was somebody that wanted to be heard only to answer questions, and they apparently don't need to answer any questions, so thank you for coming anyway. Bruce Estacio, or whatever her name is, but anyway.
Mr. President, on item 25, I have a technical amending motion that's also on the desk. If we could incorporate that into the approval, please.
Okay, a technical or, okay, 25, okay, again, let me, 19 through, or 20 through 31, anybody? No one in the audience? We have no cards, so the public hearing is closed. Okay, any specials? 20 through 31, any specials? If not, prepare the roll on 20 through 31, 25 as amended. 25 on the desk, so we'll call that special. So we have 20 through 31, with the exception of 25. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Fourth with on 28. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have been held on the supplemental agenda, items 32 through 34.
Are there any specials there? 32 is called special?
And 33.
And 33? We have 34. Anybody, anybody want to neglect, and poor little 34, nobody wants to call it special?
Yeah, special of item 34, Mr. President.
Okay. Mike called it special?
34.
34, feels better, no. Next, next item.
Item number 35, item for which public hearing has not been held.
I can take a message.
Anybody want to be heard on 35?
I'm going to call it special.
Speak up.
I choose that one.
Okay, now we'll go back and start over again.
Yeah, Ms. President, could we be forthwith on item 29?
Fourth with on 29. No objections, that will be the order. Next item.
Item number eight called special by council member Hernandez.
Members of the council, one, I saw two committee reports on item number eight, and one, I rise to support the Budget and Finance Committee report, and also wanted to make a comment that I think is very important, that we all understand, especially those members of Public Safety and Budget and Finance who had the opportunity to hear this item, because our fire department is expanding its role as a training facility and getting certified at the state level to do that. But one of the things I wanted to point out, and that is the training facility that we're developing at the Frank Hotchkin Center. There's been reservations as to the kind of investment the city should be making at that facility, simply because it hasn't been turned over to us by the federal government, and we anticipate that happening fairly soon. I hope it happens by the end of the year. But you're going to have a regional facility that needs tremendous work to really bring it up to the kind of standards that I think our fire department and our training facility deserves, especially when it comes to a lot of the space. And one day, I'm going to try and see if we could have a council meeting there so that we could get a thorough, a tour of the facility, and you could see the cracks in the wall, and you could see the facilities that have to be improved. The fact that it was an naval reserve building means that it was set up primarily for males, and our fire department is coed. And when we talk about the showers, and we talk about the facilities and the bathrooms, there's much work that needs to be done. So the only reason I bring it up is because the recommendation that is before us at this time basically calls that if they are making a million dollars or more as a result of this action, the difference would go into the general fund. And I would like us to be able to study that a little bit further, to include it being reinvested into the Frank Hotchkin Center. It'll take a couple of years to get there, and so it's not a thing of urgency today. I just want to bring it to everybody's attention that we have a tremendous facility, a tremendous building, that has tremendous work, and little by little, the fire department's been working at it, and I just want to bring it to everybody's attention today, and hopefully, one day, we'll all be able to see what that facility is like and what its needs really are. And I recommend an I vote of Budget Finance Committee report.
Any further discussion? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. The next item.
Item number 10 called special by council member Walters.
Mrs. Walters.
Oh, I called it 10 special, not for, to re-debate it, I think we've debated this considerably, but to vote no on it. My objection still standing to the proliferation of departments and creating another bureaucracy. I think it's fine in the CAO's office, and that's where it should be.
Okay, we have 10, and as amended by Mr. Fear, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 3 noes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 25 called special by council member Goldberg.
A fourth with on item 10. Item 25, Ms. Goldberg.
This is the one with the amendment on it.
Okay, all right, prepare the roll on 25. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. That's as amended by Mr. Fear. Next item.
Item number 32 called special by council member Padilla.
Mr. Padilla.
Mr. President, I would ask that this item be continued again. Check the attendance. We should have no problem with attendance for either tomorrow or Friday, so let me go ahead and ask for Friday, continues until Friday.
Okay, is there any, any objections? Mrs. Walters?
I don't object. Thank you, Mr. President, I don't object, I just have a question on this. Is this a time when you can have input into what this, the offerings that these folks should be making available to the public as a result of having, owning this franchise?
It can be.
Pardon?
If I can quickly respond, Mr. President, yes, it can be. There's two points in time in which we can change the conditions on a franchise. One is the franchise renewal process, and the other, like in this instance, is when a franchise is being transferred of ownership. So if you have any comments, there's some details that are still being tied up right now, which is why we're asking for another...
Okay, well, my concern is, in terms of programming, the C-SPAN that brings us, the federal congressional and senate hearings and a host of other programming, in hours where the senate and the congress are not in session, they have cut back. I think Media One is the local operator. They have cut back on C-SPAN 2, there are two channels. C-SPAN 1 offers congress, 2 offers the senate, and they are only offering, I think, half day of the senate, and it's, and you know, what they're...
Okay.
The rest of, they've got enough channels for whatever they're putting on C-SPAN, the space that C-SPAN 2 has, to create another channel for that if they need be. But I think any, the airwaves are publicly owned, and they should be providing this access to government on those channels. Otherwise, we have no, no opportunity to see that, and they should also, we should be getting Sacramento. Of course, we're on our own channel, but Sacramento doesn't have a channel, and neither does C-SPAN 2.
So I'll just add two things. One is, we just began a number...
I think it's fine in the CIO's office, and that's where it should be.
Okay, we have 10 and as amended by Mr. Fur. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, three nos.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 25 called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
A fourth with on item 10. Item 25, Ms. Goldberg? Okay. All right, prepare the roll on 25. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. That's as amended by Mr. Fur. Next item.
Item number 32 called special by Councilmember Padilla.
Mr. Padilla?
Mr. President, I would ask that this item be continued again. Check the attendance. We should have no problem with attendance for either tomorrow or Friday, so let me go ahead and ask for Friday, continue until Friday.
Okay, is there any objections? Mrs. Walters?
I don't object. Thank you, Mr. President. I don't object, I just have a question on this. Is this a time when you can have input into what this, the offerings that these folks should be making available to the public as a result of having, owning this franchise?
It can be.
Pardon?
If I can quickly respond, Mr. President. Yes, it can be. There's two points in time in which we can change the conditions on a franchise. One is the franchise renewal process, and the other, like in this instance, is when a franchise is being transferred of ownership. So if you have any comments, there's some details that are still being tied up right now, which is why we're asking for another three-day continuance.
Well, my concern is, in terms of programming, the C-SPAN that brings us, the federal congressional and senate hearings and a host of other programming, in hours where the senate and the congress are not in session, they have cut back. I think Media One is the local operator. They have cut back on C-SPAN Two. There are two channels. C-SPAN One offers congress, Two offers the senate. And they are only offering, I think, half day of the senate. And it's, you know, what they're...
Okay.
The rest of, they've got enough channels for whatever they're putting on C-SPAN, the space that C-SPAN Two has, to create another channel for that if they need be. But I think any, the airwaves are publicly owned, and they should be providing this access to government on those channels. Otherwise, we have no, no opportunity to see that. And they should also, we should be getting Sacramento. Of course, we're on our own channel, but Sacramento doesn't have a channel and neither does C-SPAN Two.
So I'll just add two things. One is, we just began a number of public hearings to begin the franchise renewal process, and we're visiting every franchise area, every council district. And so when it's the point in time to come to Media One or Council District Nine, that'll be the opportunity for the public to come and state those concerns and those comments. The other thing I wanted to mention is this particular item only impacts council districts two, three, 11, and 12, and deal with Time Warner and AOL specifically. So if you'd like for us to help engage in the conversation with Media One, we're more than happy to do that.
Yes. Please do.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yeah, Mr. President, members of council, I wanted to hopefully point out to the Chair of Information Technology that, sorry to say, in the city of Los Angeles that oversees franchises, and knowing that this only impacts certain districts, but that the reality is the company shares other areas through other franchises that were granted by the same city, that all systems are not the same in the city of Los Angeles. We have some systems that are much older, and every time there's a transfer, there's a promise to upgrade those systems, and it doesn't happen. I know that, again, in looking at some of the areas in my district where cable was introduced to the city of Los Angeles, we still have the oldest systems in place. Same thing in Mr. Pacheco's district. And again, every time you have such a transfer sale, the promise is made. And I'd like to know what you have in place as part of the agreement on this transfer sale that kind of helps the promises get fulfilled, if anything.
Well, two things. Again, I made reference to a number, a series of public hearings that are beginning to take place for the franchise renewal process, when all the franchise areas are up for bidding for competition throughout the city, not just one pocket of the city.
So in regards to this transfer?
But in regards to this specific transfer, any new conditions that are imposed by the city, led by ITA and the negotiations, will have to be met. Any violation therein, we can bring it back with the city attorney's support to pull the franchise area.
What conditions have been imposed? That make, what's different?
That's the final discussion that are taking place as we speak, Mr. Hernandez, between the ITA, the city attorney, my office, and the cable companies. That's why the item isn't ready to be before us today. That's why we're asking for a three-day continuance to finish those items.
Okay.
And we'll be more than happy to provide drops of the brief.
And then will we have a list of what those items are?
Yes, we will have that available.
Pacheco, did you want to be heard on this?
I just wanted to reiterate Ms. Walters' concerns in a different form in that we have been, at least I have been, speaking with the representatives from the cable industry about the lack of programming geared toward the English-speaking Latino market. And if there's anything we learned from 1999 and 2000 is that the Latino market is huge, not only in the Spanish-speaking community, but in the English-speaking world. And so I'm going to look forward to seeing what this new merger between AOL and Warner provides us in terms of opportunities to expand the services to the Latino community here in Los Angeles. And I wanted them to know that I'm still watching.
Mr. President, if I can just add one last thing. Been informed by staff that we should be ready to go by tomorrow, so just a one-day continuance, please.
Okay, we have, we have item number... To continue until tomorrow. There's no objection, that will be the order. Okay, the next item.
Item number 33 called special by Councilmember Fur. He called it special for the purpose of leaving the room.
Okay. Talk to this guy.
Twelve ayes.
Item number 34 called special. You also have cards from the public on the item.
Mr. Savarnich? I mean, Mr., the Kenneth Williams wants to be heard, but this is, there has been a, we'll give him a couple of minutes. Mr. Williams?
You're in?
No, that's okay. Kenneth Williams?
Good morning, Councilmember President. My name is Kenneth Williams. I'm a library officer, City of Los Angeles. I've been employed for almost four years now. Just want to touch briefly on why we need your support on this. Number one, on the statement that the Commander LEPD made on Friday, he says, "We have the citizen power of arrests," but the fact is, there's a liability issue there. With this status, the state gives us liability coverage from false arrests and false detainment. He also says, "He's no longer positioned of any agency getting status." But when we think about it, the reason is, we need this status because LEPD does not have the manpower to cover the libraries. If you ask the question, "When the last time a LEPD officer visited the library?", it's probably none unless we called them. The other thing, real quickly, Councilman Holden stated, "Well, you have a PR, you have mace, you have handcuffs to detain somebody." But the fact is, after we detain that person, he's yelling, he's kicking, he's threatening staff, he's threatening to blow up the building, and we do not, we don't have the facilities to hold a suspect, to detain them. Mind you, LEPD has a 30-minute to an hour and a half wait, so this guy's kicking and screaming in front of children. I know this council has concerned parents. You don't want your child exposed to somebody using profanity, threatening to blow up the library, threatening staff, being irate. That would scare children. We have grandmothers, we have women who come visit our libraries at night, we have women and children from schools that come visit our libraries. All that we ask, and we're not looking to be a full state police agency, we're just looking for liability and support for limited status to remove this person from our libraries to the nearest station. Now, Mr. Holden stated, "Well, it's going to tie up the officer for three or four hours." But we have five regions. There's two officers per region, and with the city council approval, we got five, six additional officers going to be going to patrol. So that means it's going to be three officers per region, plus a sergeant, plus an OIC. Thank you for your time, Council.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mrs. Walters?
I rise in opposition to this legislation, and therefore I would support item 34 as it is on the agenda. The police department has assured us that the libraries and the parks will be adequately policed, but they have to be called. And the library has a roving patrol of police officers, and I certainly would not like to see us react to grandparents and women and children hearing foul language. We hear more of it on the street every day and in our own workplaces, whatever they may be, from coworkers than, so none of, none of the parties named are strangers to that kind of language, unfortunately. So I urge council members that you oppose this legislation. It is not needed, and the police department will adequately take care of the libraries and the parks.
Ms. Zakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to ask the staff of the library department and the police department to come forward. We had a lengthy discussion on this on Friday, and asked whether or not they could have some conversation and perhaps create, very similar to what was going on with the Recreation and Parks Department, a memorandum of understanding between the two agencies as to how they would work together cooperatively and not leave any gaps in this. I'd like to see if they have anything they can report to us. Can you please give us a status report of any conversations you might have been able to have since last we were together in council session on Friday?
I'm Mark Leep, representing the police department, along with Chief Moore. I did meet with the library staff on Friday for about 20 minutes after council session ended. We attempted to resolve the differences on this bill, and I'm, unfortunately, I'm unable to say that we did. The police department still maintains the position that this is a proliferation of police powers, and that it really is unnecessary for library security guards to have police powers.
I may add to that, too, in this, Chief Moore, of the same police department, that I certainly concur with council members' comments as it relates to LEPD's ability to respond. This department is dedicated to certainly responding to other city entities, the library being a city, a city department, and the staff of Central Area and Central Patrol are committed to also responding. We have had great success with Wreckin' Parks and shown that the parks can be safer, and clearly that also goes along with the city libraries. We also believe that, and you'll hear comments from library staff as it relates to people who are profane or whatever, there have always been locations in any facility to place these people until police do respond. And we've certainly seen this in our other public places, whether it's in a park or whether it's in a market or whatever. This department is committed to taking these bodies off of them as expeditiously as we can. Thank you.
Well, if I can just add, before we hear from the library, I would like to hear from them. I can appreciate that, the short period of time since the last time we met and only spending 20 minutes. This night might not have been able to be resolved, but inasmuch as I'm familiar with the fact that the Recreation and Parks Department and the police department worked out quite extensively, an understanding and a protocol and arrangement, I would like to encourage the police department with the library staff, and particularly the library security guards, to look at the issues that are being raised and determine beyond a 20-minute discussion that there really be some further efforts to, between the two departments, to really work through that whole area of security to make sure that the, when needed, the police are able to be responsive as quickly as possible and have the appropriate protocol when there is someone detained at the library, et cetera, so that this can be managed in a very, very efficient manner with cooperation through the two agencies. But I would like to hear from the library department as well.
Chris Marita, Library Department. As Commander Leep said, we met for 20 minutes and we are as far apart as we were on Friday. We didn't come to any resolution. Again, we are asking the council to support this legislation that would give the library officers limited peace officer authority, not full peace officer stat, not the ability to carry firearms, just limited peace officer authority. And this gives our officers three things, and I'll have Chief Love, Chief of the Library Security Officers, attend to that.
Yes, Mr. President, council members. As I was speaking with Chief Moore a moment ago, we were discussing some of the things that are needed by the library. But I think, first of all, I need to bring to your attention is that when we say anything about peace officer, there's like a red flag or sirens go off, and that's not exactly what we're looking for. This is a very limited peace officer authority. It would only apply to us while we were on duty for the eight hours, and when we could finish work, we'd go home and be normal patrons or employees at the library. But the, but the ability to arrest and transport a suspect is very important to the atmosphere of the library, to move them out, to get them out of there. And this would be one of the tools that would allow us to do that. Another one of the abilities that this would allow us would be to search a suspect more thoroughly than we're already authorized to do without being liable to some degree for illegal search and seizures. We would be able to, and that has been, there have been times when we have received all sorts of weapons from suspects. And for the officer's safety and the protection of the officers, we would like the ability to be able to search them. The very minor things that we're seeking in this bill, it's not like I say, it has nothing to do with how the Parks and Recreation or the Department of General Services authority, this is not even close to what they are. This is, again, a very limited ability. Again, I'd like to emphasize the fact, not only the staff we're here to protect and the patrons, but officer's safety is very important, and it's an issue here that we would just have this for a tool for that protection. And again, I urged, I urged the, I urged the council to support this bill and to just give us those tools to try to protect the officers and do a job.
Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. President, members of council.
Let me say, Julie Butcher signed up a card. This has been half-public hearing, right, Julie? You're opposed to the, to the thing, and we understand that, so thank you for coming.
Should appoint her to the...
And that's why, that's why I'm telling her, she can't talk today.
Mr. President, Mr. President, hopefully you've been holding my time while that interchange was going on, but I did want to point out that it was that, I called it special, and there might have been the impression it was at your direction, but my intentions were to call it special in the first place. Members of the council, I just wanted to point a few things out that, discussions that we've been having, because our police department needs all the help it can get, it basically can't do it all by itself. And when we're dealing about the issue of safe havens and where children should be safe, and the impression of locations that there should be safety, we as a city need to understand the status of our schools, who have their own police department, but we were just criticized in the LA Bridges program because we said our social service collaborators did not have a relationship with law enforcement, and I felt that law enforcement needed to have a relationship with them. We know that, I brought in a motion, because in Highland Park, at a regional library, an old facility, without an alarm system, we actually had a librarian that was pistol-whipped. We know that crime violence doesn't have age limits, it's, I mean, it's happening in a lot of atmospheres. And the fact that the police department is now developing an MOU with our parks is extremely important, but it should have been in place a while back. And I think the fact that the police department now wants to develop an MOU with the library department is positive, but it should have been in place a while back. And when we look at our facilities and the fact that we have security guards or security officers who basically's role is to survey those locations and protect those locations, to have the right to arrest someone who's committing a crime, I don't think is a biggie, as long as they don't have guns. Because they'll still need the police department, and we'll need the police department to respond. But it's that added authority that basically could be working hand-in-hand with our police department. And I just wanted to point it out, because for us to say no might not make a lot of sense when we look at the size of this city and the fact that we continue to try and find safe havens, or look for safe havens for our children and our families, places that they can really call safe. And so the police department has to have that kind of understanding, and I think they do. But now we're trying to formalize it with an MOU. I think it should have been in place already. And again, having this added tool, I don't think harms us. The fact that it was introduced by a previous council member, who is now a state senator, also should be respected. And so for us just to oppose it doesn't make sense to me. That's why I was calling it special, because I was going to ask if we couldn't support it, that we stay neutral on it, and let the state legislature make that decision. But the recommendation from the committee was to oppose it, and I basically oppose that recommendation.
Yes, I actually have changed my position from the, from last week, because I thought the issue was guns, and I was not supportive of that. But now that I understand that the whole real crux of this is really about personal liability for people who were asking to make arrests when arrests are appropriate, and saying to them, "Well, rather than give you the oppo-" to them, "Well, rather than give you the opportunity to be covered by giving you limited peace officer status, we want you to go ahead and do this as a citizen, as a private citizen, and good luck," you know? I don't think that's an appropriate thing for the employer to say. And so I have changed my position. I now support the legislation. I think we should have done it without legislation. That would have been my preference. I'm not sure why we got to the point where we are and why this didn't come through one committee or another to get us to this place, but be that as it may, opposing the legislation is like saying to people, "We don't care that you have personal liability when you're out there protecting patrons and staff members who attend our public libraries." And so I've changed my position because for me, the issue was, and you had raised it about more people with guns and stuff, and I --
You did.
Oh, I thought you did. Somebody did. Somebody did in the discussion last week.
Arrest power this time and guns next time.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought the issue was guns. Then I misheard you. I thought the issue was guns, and at that point I was opposed to the legislation. But I would urge people, if you thought that was the situation like I did mistakenly, to at least look at this in another point of view, which is to look at this as an issue of liability, which I think is an appropriate thing to look at.
Mr. Holden, the Chair of the Committee?
I'm tired of teaching. You do what you will. Mr. Alacon repeatedly introduced legislation to preempt local government, the city of Los Angeles. You ought to be tired of it by now. It was the airport, and it was this, it was that. Sure, he's been a friend?
You told him to bring in all those things --
No, I didn't. I didn't think of anything like that. If you want to empower the security guards at the library to be police officers, carry guns, you have the local option. You can do that now. Doesn't have to be mandated by the state. If you let them mandate this, they'll mandate everything else they want to shove down your throat. Now, I know you're going to go to Sacramento, and please do not be too hard on us. And Mr. -- sure, but you know, your side of the aisle came out against this strong, and the others flip-flopped on it. I mean, they only got 10 votes out of the Senate, I mean, 22 votes out of the Senate out of his own House of Origin. This bill's going to die because it should be dead. Okay? That's what's going to happen to it, and their safety is not in jeopardy. They've never heard, I've never heard since I've been here 13 years, security officer in the library being injured, being hurt, being shot, being hospitalized because of somebody they tried to arrest, and they have made arrests. Now, come on. If you want to give them more power, let them come the right way and negotiate it with your committee, with local government, and you do it. Mr. Deaton, come to the table. Will you talk to these people?
There's some sense to this.
I mean, here they are, for the first time, they're saying, "Let's let the state tell us what to do." And that's what you're really doing. State mandated for the city of Los Angeles only. If it's only, if it's a good piece of legislation, Ms. Goldberg and others, let it be statewide. You know why it's not statewide? It's not statewide because he wouldn't even get no vote but his own, because the other legislators are responsible in this area and they say they don't need it. The law enforcement which is in place will take care of it. Come on. You want to vote for this? You want to give away your influence? Give it all away. You don't need the Intergovernmental Relations Committee at all, anymore, anytime. I mean, it's not anything personal with me. I could care less except for the fact that I'm elected to represent the people of this city, and that's what I intend to do. Now, you want to skirt, shirk your responsibility and send it up north? Go ahead and do that. Mr. Deaton, you can respond. Mr. Deaton, you want to comment about local government?
Well, I think that, actually, I do agree with Mr. Holden. Maybe surprising to some people, but the situation is, it is very interesting, forgetting the merits for a moment, of whether these individuals should have the right to be able to arrest or not, that in fact, we have a bill that's before one house, has gone through one house of the legislature, and the discussion at this level is now being conducted as opposed to it being brought to this body and the city of Los Angeles sponsoring this legislation for these security officers or other security officers. This is not the way to do business. If the library department wanted this, then the library department should have come to the city and asked for it, as opposed to sending letters of support for this bill to the state legislature before they sent letters to the city council.
The library did come before the full city council in 1997. At that time, the full city council and LAPD supported similar legislation. We didn't know we'd have to come back every year to do this.
Mr. Ridley Thomas, you have the floor. Where is he?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, this discussion has been rather illuminating, and I think it's reasonably clear to all of us that this is a matter that ought to be taken seriously. I do not think that the legislation is the best in the sense that if it applies only or exclusively to Los Angeles, that it ought to enjoy our support. Having said that, I am fundamentally persuaded that this is a structural or systemic problem. I do not believe that MOUs satisfy the problem. I do not believe that. I do not believe it with respect to Wreckin' Parks. I do not believe it with respect to the libraries. I think this warrants a different kind of approach. And I take note that the commander brings with him Chief Moore to reinforce the claims that are being made about the proliferation of police powers. Well, that's selectively invoked. The Police Department has no difficulty with being acquisitive when they deem it to be in their interest. There's no debate in our mind. The only thing we have to do is appeal to the budget process and the routine requests we get throughout the year to make this department stronger, presumably more effective. It would seem to me that rather than reduce this discussion to a debate between which department has most authority or power, it ought to be driven by the concerns of public safety in every single public venue for which we are responsible. And libraries, it would seem to me, ought to be at the top of that list. And to the extent that that is the case, Mr. Deaton, since it is your recommendation that this legislation not be supported, I would request and am prepared to move that the chief legislative analysts come back with a report to this body detailing how it is we take responsibility for what is being attempted in this legislation at the local level so that we can enact it ourselves. And if there's a second to that motion, I would so move. Several, all right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco?
The last time we met, I just had some questions about what type of arrests or what type of incidents were occurring at the library so I can make an informed decision. And so I wanted to ask the library staff if that information was available in terms of what type of incidents are we talking about? I don't even know if we're talking about people who act violently or people who do what's called disturbing the peace in a public space, which, so do you have that information for me so I can look at that?
Yes, councilman. To look at it, I can briefly tell you that 25% of felonies and about 75% of misdemeanors, there are some stats here that our business manager has brought, and perhaps they can be channeled to you if you'd like to see them.
Sure, she can just handle, I mean, I don't need this to go over on the record here. I can just look at them on the side, but let me just look at those records. And the only other question I had is I'm kind of not sure if, I'm confused about Ms. Goldberg's statement about liability for people performing their jobs. Is that something that the city attorney offered us today? I just wanted to know what, get some clarity on exactly where that came from because I was under the impression that any one of our city employees who are working within the scope of their employment would be protected from individual liability. So does that city attorney opinion or is that something that?
Normally, city employees are. It depends, though sometimes the courts will find, they have, the courts have found in certain actions that the city liable.
The individual, the debate that I was hearing was that there was some concern that the individual may be liable for performing their job functions, and my immediate knee-jerk response is then we should do something to clarify the fact that we're going to be there for a person performing their job functions. But I'm just trying to get some clarity as to, do you know what this new twist is?
I don't.
Okay. All right, well, Mr. Burnson will give me some background. He's volunteered. Thank you, Mr. Burnson.
Mrs. Chick?
Yes, I'm very pleased that there were quite a few of us seconding my colleague's motion because I think that there's a strong interest on the part of many of us to proceed with the proposal, but to do it in a different way and to address taking care of our own business right here. But I did want to ask about the statement that was made that the city and the Police Department both supported this legislation in '97, and so we took a support position to create limited peace officer status for library. Well, it sounds like we needed our memory refreshed a little bit. But I also agree, and having watched and tried to work through, and I don't believe we still have the full answers there yet either, the whole issue of arming park rangers, I feel very strongly that if we don't have safe public places such as libraries and parks, if the city of Los Angeles cannot say that our public places are safe for our families, our children, our elders, we don't have a safe city. And clearly, there are some needs that need to be addressed. So I will eagerly look forward to hearing back from our CLA, and I assume there's others that would need to be consulted in this, and to see how we go forward and deal with taking care of our problems. Thank you.
Mr. Burnson?
Members of the council, this is a question of principle, and that's the main thing. I think Mr. Ridley Thomas said what my feelings are on it. This is something that we should have done ourself, and I think the importance and the safety of the kids and the people in libraries is important. What is also important is the fact that we, as local elected officials, do our job and not have intervention from Sacramento. Local control is something we all believe in. Now, maybe Mr. Alacon or Senator, I should say the Senator, my former seatmate, felt that we weren't doing our job and he introduced the legislation. Maybe this will get us moving in that direction because I think it's necessary. We need to protect these people. We need to protect the kids and the librarians that they protect. So I would hope, Jackie, that when this comes back, that you will take it into your personnel committee and prepare and give them the protection and the kids the protection they need, but let's hold the fort on local control. I think that's important. We should not mix the two. Local control is extremely important because if we don't maintain that, we're just asking. And when you get to Sacramento and you're going to be there the first of the year, remember when you were here, you believed in local control, and we should do the things we should do. And sometimes it takes a little reminder that we haven't been doing our job. And maybe that's the case, okay? And just get there first, Rudy, and then we'll talk about it, okay? But anyway, we know Jackie's going to be there, you know, because she's been out campaigning every day. But anyway, let's keep this in mind. We are the closest level of representation to the people in Los Angeles, and we should not give our responsibility up to somebody else. That's the key here. I know what you want. I think you're going to get it, but I hope that you're going to get it in the right way, not the wrong way, because we abdicate our responsibility.
Mr. Savanich?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I have mixed feelings on this also because as one of the members who has been advocating for a long time on this floor to give those that we entrust to be peace officers or quasi-peace officers the authority to do their job, we've had a rough road in this city. And I can only think that the reason why the library department, in my mind, it's two reasons. One, that they didn't think they had to ask for permission again to go ahead and do this, or number two, maybe there's some level of frustration in regards to having a three-year-old approval and not get anywhere with it. But I agree to what my colleagues have said also, and I think this body has to be consistent. Just last week, this council opposed a bill which would have given greater benefits to airport police officers and port police officers because there was legislation being carried in Sacramento that usurped our local authority in regards to our offering that benefit. And so I think we have to be consistent in regards to what we do here, that if we opposed giving a benefit to airport police and port police, then what we should not do is to allow Sacramento to dictate on how we go ahead and give greater police powers to our library officers, even though I agree that they need additional police powers. My question would be to Mr. Deaton, is that Mr. Ridley Thomas has requested within 30 days, I believe, or less, a report come back in regards to this council being able to seriously consider putting into effect what state legislation is trying to do. And so my question is, is that when that report comes back, I would hope that in a very quick time period, and I believe the Chair of the committee has agreed to see it quickly also, that we could act on this and we could go ahead and adopt the legislation here in the city of Los Angeles without the legislature telling us what to do. And so what type of information do we need, Mr. Deaton, that this council has to act on, whereas a simple 41 vote of the legislature could make this law tomorrow if they wanted to, but I know it's working its way through committees? What Ts do we have to cross and Is do we have to dot in order for this, for this city to consider this sooner rather than later?
I have to look into it.
Okay, great. I was expecting that answer.
But I'll do it in a hurry.
And I think we need to. In fact, if we don't drag our feet, there is a quite likelihood that we could adopt this before the legislature adopts this. That's if we have the willingness to do it. I am not going to vote for this item today because I do not believe that Sacramento should be telling cities what to do, especially when this city has just been targeted to do this. But I do support additional police powers being given to the library officers. But I think that responsibility lies with this city government, not with the legislature in Sacramento. And so to the library officers, I support your endeavor, but I think that job needs to be done here, not up north in Sacramento.
We'll keep those words for the future.
Jackie will remind me, Mr. President.
Ms. Takowski?
I think we're on the right track. I would just like to ask the maker of the motion, who asked Mr. Deaton to help pull this together, that we also encourage the library department and the Police Department to continue that discussion because as we specify, if limited peace officer status is the appropriate course, then we need to make sure that we aren't able to do it, and then we do it according to our own standards and our own judgment. And I also think it might be worthwhile at this time that we ask the CLA to do a comparison of where we have security guards in our system, under which jurisdictions and which agencies, where we have limited peace officers, and what differences we have among limited peace officers, and then those who are post-certified and allowed to carry weapons. I think we have a variety of those functions in our city other than the Police Department, and I think we need to know what they are. I think with the one city, one police report did that to some degree, but we need to update it, upgrade it, and make sure that we are consistent. And I guess my view is that where I hear consensus around this table is for two things. One, local control, and two, underscoring limited peace officer -- two things, one, local control and two, underscoring limited peace officer status for the library guards here, so that they do not, and this is not a prelude to creating a category which will then lead to being armed, because that is not something that I hear any consensus for around this table and I want to make sure that we have that certainty and that we have that control and that will only come with a very strong relationship with the police department and our security forces wherever they may be.
Mr. President, members of the council, it might be well to continue this for, we can take, I'm not afraid of your report, Mr. Hernandez, no, I'm just saying so I can respond back to Mr. Savarnich's issue of exactly how, if possible, for the city to do what the state legislature can do relative to peace officer, officer status.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, and I, I'm glad that the CLA is asking for some time to review this a little bit more, I want to read the report that was not signed by the CLA's office, but is before us, is a communication from the chair that reviewed this, basically it says, this power extends to any place in the state, in neither case are the security officers able to carry firearms and have full peace officer status. The bill is an outgrowth of a feasibility study by the Commission of Peace Officer Standards Training Post completed in 1997, Post recommended that they be given limited peace officer powers pursuant to Penal Code Section 830-11, this section grants the power to arrest and to serve warrants during the course of employment subject to the completion of specified training courses and the authority to receive state summary criminal history information. Later in 1997, the council approved sponsorship of legislation to implement the Post recommendations. In 1998, the city sponsored SB 1936 introduced by Johnson to give Penal Code Section 830-11 status for library security officers. When the bill passed the Assembly Public Safety Committee, this provision was deleted due to a misunderstanding by the committee consultant that the Los Angeles library officers had not qualified for this status by post. In February of 2000, Senator Alakon introduced SB 1578 to accomplish the same goal as the Post study recommended, the library recommends support of SB 1578 based on the council action of 1997. I just thought I'd read that out loud, members of the council, because it seems to me that we were trying to fill a gap that was created by a previous misunderstanding on legislation we sponsored, and I would move that at least we receive and file the recommendation to oppose the legislation and allow the CLA to come back with further recommendations as to what we might want to do. I don't believe that Senator Alakon is trying to do something to undermine the city of Los Angeles, based on what I just read to everybody, I think he's trying to fill a gap as to a previous misunderstanding and I thought I'd read it out loud so that we don't run into more misunderstandings.
If I might just add a little bit, reading from the same report, an amendment should however be added based on the 99, in 99 concerning upgrading, similar to the Los Angeles Department Transportation inspectors, and there was a memorandum of understanding required with the OT and the police chief before that would be implementable and the, the police department recommended a similar one on this, this particular language as well. My problem has been is that the.
I don't have a problem with that.
A piece of legislation that is directed at the city of Los Angeles and not to come here, even though it came here in the past, it's a different session, it should be debated at that point and it's as much process as it is anything else, are there other inspectors or other security guards that also should have been included, I don't know, this isn't just, it's not the way to conduct business.
All right, Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, Mr. President, I agree that this is not the way to conduct business and I'm really frankly surprised at the almost hostile attitude by the library department here today on the issue, when you talk about something that was three years ago, as one of our former council people was fond of saying, "That was then and this is now," and I would like to ask.
One of your favorites, too.
Yeah, I would like to ask Mr. Deaton, since he has been directed by a motion of one of my colleagues and several people around the horseshoe who seconded the motion, I would like to ask you to also provide us with the alternative to that request, they're asking you why we shouldn't do it, why we should do it, to provide them with reasons why we should do it, and I'm asking for you to provide us with reasons why we shouldn't do it, and I think you've done that here at the table today, we, we get very hopped up sometimes and want to pass feel-good legislation on the spur of the moment and don't listen to reason or don't take time to think a thing through, and I think that we've had a good report from the police department here today, I'm unimpressed by the library's report and disturbed by the attitude that they've displayed, it's the first time I've run into that kind of attitude by anybody from the library department, but I think that the time is not yet here for us to support this legislation, nor is the time yet here for us to support giving this peace officer status, however limited, to any other security personnel within the city, we've got too many quasi-police forces running around now and we don't need any more, so, Mr. Deaton, I look forward to your giving us a concomitant argument as to why we should not do it, why we should oppose the legislation and why we should not do it here.
Thank you, Councilwoman, the chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
Right in closing, Mr. President, members, I think you've had a healthy debate in which, come out of this debate is the fact that you want to discuss this on a local level and that you have an option of doing just what the, the security guards, the library security guards are in fact requesting, you do not need the state to mandate it, what Mr. Hernandez read is what the CLA wrote and they were just giving you some history in the summary, but there had to be a reason why the last action was deleted from the legislation, it was not chapped into law, there had to be a reason for that, and the chance of the reason is that it was not inadvertent, not that it was omitted, it was the fact that the LA obviously didn't want it and this is something they want to be able to be consistent on a local level, so I'm saying to you that, all right, Ms. Goldberg, look, if you want to just let Sacramento run us legislatively, just go ahead and do that, this could be the beginning, this is a local option that should be assumed by the local elected officials and they should adopt it, it's a policy that should apply to other security guards as well as citywide, the policy should be uniform and not done sporadically, simple as that, I mean, I don't want to sound too hard, but my God, highest can I penetrate, you know, that's highest, it has to be done, and so I still make the motion that we oppose the legislation that has been amended, that Mr. Deaton will come back with a statement or finding or policy that could be uniform throughout the city for other security guards as well, but to, to do this is only to look forward to another piece of legislation dealing with the airports, dealing with the harbor, dealing with whatever, wherever else we have security guards, or city hall, we do have them here, so that's my recommendation, stay the course, one for the gipper.
Mr. Burnson.
Any objections to the previous question?
Okay, the previous question been imposed, so what do we have before us first?
Question, I presume that Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion, which I seconded or was a coseconded, is an amendment to the committee report, is that correct? I would urge a high vote.
Mr. Deaton, to continue it for a day or two so that they could sort out the issue that Mr. Hernandez had read, had read on the question of whether or not we need enabling legislation in Sacramento to do what we might want to do.
No, no, so the, continuing it for how long?
Two days, till Friday, till Friday, Ron, till Friday, one week, yeah, one week, one week.
Ron, how long you want this continued, one week, one week?
Mr. President, I'm going to tell you right now, I'm, I'm not going to vote for continuation unless we agree that there's going to be no more of this debate, we've been through this for an hour and a half, twice now, and we've said the same things over and over and over again, and I'll tell you right now, I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote for continuance, why don't we just continue the portion about what Mr. Ridley Thomas's amendment was?
And then Mr. Holden, then let's, 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 let's continue the thing one week and we'll worry about it next week, and I'll, I'll, Mr. Mr. Burnson, you'll be the first one, I will not let speak.
Boy, he has a no vote on the continuance.
Okay, prepare the roll on a continuous for one week.
Ask for a no vote.
I vote.
It'd be late to vote.
Eleven eyes, two no.
Okay, Mr. Holden and Mr. Burnson.
You guys do this again, I'm going to go home.
Okay, okay, the next, thank you, thank you very much for being here, next item.
Item 35, call special by council member Chick.
Mrs. Chick, you want to?
I want to divert you, your attention, our attention, I have a verbal amendment to make to the committee report and colleagues, what's before us is the fruition of a lot of hard work on the part of our, our Department of General Services, our CAO, our Board of Public Works and our Department of Public Works, coming up with a very sensible, pragmatic contractor evaluation process so that we don't have some of the nightmares we've seen in the past where the city has used a contractor, for instance, on a construction project, had a horrible outcome and then we turn around and find out that we're using the same contractor in some other part of the city, it just does not make sense to end up with projects over budget that aren't quality projects and to keep hiring the same contractors who have these problems, and I also want to emphasize, we've been very careful to make the process fair and objective and that we've worked with contractors, both procurement, personal services and construction contractors, the amendment is to amend items two and three in the committee report to additionally instruct the CAO and General Services Department to develop a questionnaire or a survey, some kind of process, to obtain information from contractors about their experiences doing business with the city, especially noting trends or repeated problems, and then also report back to the GE Committee, Governmental Efficiency Committee in six months with the results.
All right, Mr. Ridley.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is no small matter, if not all of us, at least some of us have been burned by contractors who perform poorly on one city project and the next thing you know, they're working on another one in someone else's district or either in one's own district pursuant to automatic pilot of the Board of Public Works on the one hand or the Department of Recreation and Parks on the other hand because of the bid process, and I can tell you, some of the things that some of these contractors have done are absolutely egregious, an example, being faced with rather stiff penalties for hiring workers and paying them below the required wages and exploiting quote-unquote cheap labor and doing it in various parts of the city, creating ill will and a whole range of things and yet turning around and being able to contract with the city to do it, again, I have specific examples to which I can refer in the eighth district alone and it created just a huge problem and on top of that, they, they performed poorly in terms of the quality of the work that they did, so Mrs. Chick, I rise simply to strongly encourage a pursuit of this because it is a very serious problem and it has often led to the delay of the projects that we wish to have completed being done in a timely fashion and I refer you to Recreation and Parks for some specific examples of those contractors that should be avoided at all cost.
Mr. Savarnich.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, I would like to commend Councilwoman Chick and her committee for bringing this forward, as the author of some of the motions that were considered as part of this package, this is, this is really good news, one of the things that I think needs to be emphasized, colleagues, is that on a daily basis, perhaps maybe on a weekly basis, there are various commissions in this city and the Board of Public Works that award contracts, and one of the things to which I think we needed to put into place very quickly was a clearinghouse to see whether or not the persons or the entities receiving the contracts were shoddy contractors or credible contractors, and one of the things that I think that we need to do quickly rather than not is for this city to adopt a policy that if you default on a contract with the city of Los Angeles, which could cost the taxpayers millions of dollars in some occasions, that you will not be considered for a contract again, and it's the bottom, it should be just as easy as that, I was just looking in the Los Angeles Times over the course of the last week, in my district alone, with the harbor department, with the General Services Department, we are involved in approximately $130 million of dispute with contractors, $130 million, $105 million of being the Badger Avenue Bridge that goes from Terminal Island to Wilmington, and some of you may have seen that, in the Los Angeles Times over the weekend, there was an article about the Banning's Landing Project in regards to where the contractor walked away, and Mr. Hernandez is familiar with the project, walked away from a $2.5 million project, and then also, let's talk about some of the seismic rehabilitations that we've had to do on some of our city buildings, the San Pedro Municipal Building that we opened and, and Mr. Ridley Thomas was at the grand opening, the contractor walked off of that job and general services forces had to come in and finish the job, so it's the city forces that have been going around the city cleaning up after some of these contractors' messes, and I think we need to take a stand here and now to be able to say, if you default on the contract with the people of the city of Los Angeles, don't come back, because what you probably have done, it costs us hundreds if not millions of dollars, and what I would like to move, Mr. President, is that we go ahead and make part and send a quick message to the Board of Public Works and the other proprietary departments that the city council is not going to tolerate any further them awarding contracts to entities which have defaulted, and I think that should be one of the check-offs when someone has awarded a contract by the proprietaries or the Board of Public Works, is whether or not they have defaulted before, and I would like to make that one of the recommendations, Mrs. Chick, to the committee, and that could be very simple, have you defaulted on a city contract before and have someone that make sure that they did or they didn't.
Ms. Goldberg.
Well, one of the key things you're going to need, though, is staff to make sure this gets done, and I actually, I did try to put a, one position in the CAO's office to do this after I had read the report and we were not successful in doing that, we didn't put a position in, so I am going to ask that when this all comes back, that we have some identification of staff and funding because it's one thing to ask people to tell us whether they defaulted or not, it's another thing to have someone who might check and see if they're telling us the truth, because see, if I've defaulted and I know that if I say yes, defaulting automatically disqualifies me, call me wild and crazy, there are going to be a few folks out there who are going to say no even though they have, and I want us to make sure that we're going to level this playing field and not say, the dishonest get contracts, but the honest don't, and there are a number of issues on this checklist, I have a contractor in my district who has not defaulted, but the project is about a third of the way done and the original documents were signed four years before I came into office, so while there's been no default, it's 11 years later and this is finally just happening, so there are lots of different indices, but we need to get at this issue because it is true that it is difficult, I think for all of us sometimes, to see the names of companies or contractors on bids and to say, gee, how in the world could that have happened?
have happened? I know they screwed up in my district, and the answer is, Department A didn't know because it happened in Department B, or District A didn't know because it happened in District C. And if there isn't a centralized depository and an evaluation of goods, services, developments, contracts, each time they're done, and with appropriate staff, and I don't need to meet in a staff of thousands, but one or two people who can go and verify the information, we're just going to keep finding this situation happening over and over again. I think Mrs. Walters will remember that we did have penalties in the school district for folks who were not allowed, wasn't, wasn't lifetime bans, but it was three years or five years, depending on the severity of the consequences, because sometimes a ban for a couple of years cleans up their act. So, we didn't have, I don't recall any, anyway, offhand, lifetime bans, but we did have bans that were for three, or five, or more years, depending on the severity of the misconduct. So, I just think this is a good area for us to go into. It's long overdue, it protects the public, and it also protects each, each district from, or, and each department, from finding out after it's too late, that somehow or another, they should have known.
All right, Mrs. Chick, to close.
That's exactly what I'm planning to do. Colleagues, thank you for your interest, and Mr. Savornich in particular, thank you for that, and some other very, I think, productive motions coming in the Governmental Efficiency Committee. What I'd like to do, in terms of the guidelines, is to leave what's before us in place. What you're talking about in terms of defaulting is certainly, in all three categories of contracts, a glaring red light that's identified in this process, and that certainly is a very strong message to departments, that is not somebody that we hire again. But I would like, before we add something today, to make sure that we run it through the city attorney, et cetera, because we have organizations representing different contractors, participating in the committee meetings, participating with city departments, to, one, make sure that there was an appeal process, to make sure that it was as objective as possible, and I would rather not change any of the guidelines with also, without involving the responsible contractors that have participated in the process. I think your concern is basically already addressed in what's before us. And then, I also wanted to point out, colleagues, that there is a motion that I introduce that's going to Budget and Finance, and that I hope all of you will support when it comes through that committee back. Councilmember Goldberg mentioned, in terms of resources. This will not work unless we have the central repository, Mr. Savornich, because departments won't have the information. And the CAO's office absolutely legitimately needs, and realistically needs, one more staff person to be able to do all of the tracking it's been mandated to do, living wage, worker retention, all of our qualifications and requirements, and now to do this. And I propose to all of you that it will, that position will more than pay for itself before the year is up, by saving us money on bad contracts. Thank you.
Ms. Goldberg, you want to be heard again?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Okay, then, what do you want us to do with this?
I want to approve it.
Okay, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
We have special two on the desk, Mr. President, a motion presented by Councilmember Holden. The city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Yeah, Mr. Ms. Weingard?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I thought this was Mr. Holden made this. He, it was his, I heard on the radio that he was doing this, not the city, but Nate Holden personally did.
I think Mr. Holden was asking that the city make the motion to provide the reward. On Friday, May 26th, an Albert Patton and his wife, Edna Patton, were stabbed to death in their home on this, in this 2800 block of South La Brea Avenue. The police department has requested that this reward be brought as a means of seeking information regarding the police, the people who committed this crime, and therefore, the council would need to make the findings, that there's an immediate need to act, and the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda.
Okay, prepare the roll on the findings. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Now, we have a matter before us. Prepare the roll.
Mr. President?
Tabulate the vote.
Mr. President?
That is approved. You, you got you what you wanted, Nate?
No, 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 Mr. President, don't, don't speak of it so lightly.
No, I'm not speaking of it lightly.
Mr. President?
Mr. Yeah, Mr., the matter has been approved, that's what you want to do, isn't it?
All right, Mr. President, that's what, I would think that's what we all.
Now, you can say that on the adjournment motion.
No, no, I think that's what we all would want, Mr. President.
Okay. The next item.
Yeah, I understand that.
Look, we talked enough about a lot of things today, let's get going. Next item.
Mr. President, it doesn't sound good if you keep talking like that.
This is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
Brenda Shockley wants to be heard.
Do you want to do that special forthwith?
Thank you.
Forthwith on Mr. Holden's motion.
Thank you, sir. Actually, I want it to be heard on item thirteen, but you passed it before my card was up there. I don't, I'm not asking for reconsideration, but I do have public comment that I'd like to make. It has to do with the Workforce Investment Act, youth request for proposal, and I wanted to make quick, four quick comments. First, I'd like to support paragraph six of that item, which directs the Department and the Workforce Investment Board to look at ways that performing contractors who were not recommended would be included in any funding that, in excess of the $18 million. And I appreciate that effort on part of the department, as well as the committee. Our original appeal, though, I do want to state that we raised real issues regarding the methodology for scoring the request for proposal, that we felt that it was really driven by cost, and that it really was biased against those proposers who wanted to work with the hardest-to-serve youth, which almost always cost more money. Finally, I'd like to also add that ultimately, anyone would be in my position, given the fact that the amount of money that is received by the City of Los Angeles, again, by the Workforce Investment Act, is substantially less than what it received under the Job Training Partnership Act. And while there's no direct fiscal impact on the general fund, that perhaps there should be, because it ultimately results in a lack of services to a much-needed population. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only card we have, so the public comment period is closed. Next item.
Motions for posting a referral.
If there's no objection, unanimous vote.
We have an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Goldberg requests to be excused Wednesday, June 11th, to leave at 11:00 a.m. City Business meets Council Policy.
Unanimous vote.
The desk is clear, Mr. President.
Okay, we have adjourned motion, so would everyone please stand? Members of the council, I'd ask we adjourn in memory of Lucille Ellis Simon, who passed away. She had been an art patron and collector, and served on the board of the Los Angeles County Museum of Art, longtime supporter of art education. She was, she was the sole funder of an innovative art appreciation program for grade-school children. She was a member, resided in the Fourth District, and I'd ask we adjourn in her memory. I'm sure that all of us want to adjourn in memory of Lori Gonzalez, the granddaughter of Chief and Mrs. Bernie Parks. She leaves her parents, three brothers, and a sister, and it was a senseless murder. It's unbelievable what's happening in our city nowadays. Mr. Burnson?
Yeah, I'd like to be a co-presenter on that, because I've known the family for over thirty years, and it's a sad thing. And I think that, hopefully, that from this senseless act, maybe people who are elected to protect the public at all levels, not just our level, will, something has got to be done about what's happening today in our society, with the violence and the taking of lives with, in such an unwanted way. And my heart goes out to their family.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, and members, also sad to adjourn in memory of a friend of mine, Wayne McLean, Wade McLean. He was appointed Regional Director of the Human Resources by Governor Pat Brown from '66, '73. He retired from Whitaker Corporation as the Equal Employment Opportunities Officer, Manager, '74 to '85. He was only seventy years old, just passed away. The service is Thursday at Inglewood Park March Area at 1:00 p.m. He leaves two sons, Gordon and Gregory. Certainly, this guy who did so much for so many will be missed. Mr. President, members, that, of course, we all heard about Albert and Edna Patton, a husband and wife. Of course, you already know that Al was about ninety years old, and murdered Saturday night. He was a philanthropist who gave a lot of money in support to students who were in need of education and didn't have the means to acquire it. Played a major role, of course, in developing the Harlem Gold Raiders in the 1920s, and also co-founded the National Organization of 100 Black Men Benefiting Disadvantaged Youth. This guy is, that a lot of athletes come by his building and stay there. They had no places to go because of discrimination. He made a nice, livable place available to athletes at the time they needed it most. His wife and lived out their days, some of their renters included Will Chamberlain, Joe Lewis, and of course, former Mayor Tom Bradley, when he was a police officer. Patton later contributed to local senior citizen centers, and coordinated scholarships for the 100 Black Men Like Scholars. He leaves two nieces, Marlon and Carol, a grandnephew, Dwayne Foster, grandnieces, Kim, Maya, Marcia, Shawn. And, Mr. President, I would have, I did introduce the reward for the person responsible for taking his wife and his life, and I was in the process of doing it for Miss Gonzalez, but I want the record to show that the detective decided that it would interfere with the investigation, and there was no slight for one or the other. And that had to be mentioned, Mr. President. And I thank you.
All members on the panel.
I want to second that. Mr. Patton was very active in our '84 Olympics, too. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, would you join me in adjourned in memory of Roland Charles? Mr. Charles was a photographer and curator who founded the Black Photographers Association of California, and read, and ran the influential black gallery in the Crenshaw District for more than a decade. He was a founding board member of Jazz Photographers Association and photo friends of the Los Angeles Public Library. He is survived by his wife, Deborah, and a daughter, Rashawn Harley. He will be sorely missed.
Mrs. Walters?
Yes, I'd like to be a co-presenter on both the adjournment motion for the Pattons and for Lori Gonzalez. When I was at the school district, I used to hear from Al Patton from time to time about various things that he was trying to do, and that he was involved in, and haven't heard from him very often here at the city. But he was an extremely active person, and he always made the rounds of the various fundraisers for Urban League, and the various other fundraisers for organizations in the African-American community. They were both very active people, and they were always together. And to think that people who were so involved in the, in bettering the life of a community, their lives would be taken away in such a fashion. Al was ninety, his wife was eighty-five, and according to the reports, she was in a body cast from hip problems. And for them, for some nut to go and destroy their lives in this fashion is really an outrage, indeed.
Hi, the council is adjourned.